I'd call a meeting to order and welcome everybody to the September 25th, 2018, regular meeting at six o'clock for the Laverne Planning Commission. We do have a quorum. Our first item of business is to approve the meeting minutes from the August 28th, 2018, regular meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept or submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes passed. First item of old business. Final plat re-subdivision of Tipperary Hyatt, Section 3, requested by Bertie Higdon. Property located at 111 Tipperary Drive, Tax Map 17C, Group A, Parcell 6 and 8, R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Charles and Bertie Higdon. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This project we've been working on since about mid-July, so over two months, I guess. So this is the Higdon property. It's an L-shaped parcel, two parcels that make an L. It's got frontage on Cherokee as well as Tipperary. And the house on Tipperary, I'll show you a picture of it. That's the house on Tipperary, and this goes back. These houses were built in late 50s, and the city didn't incorporate until about 72. So there became a lot of legal non-conforming structures at the time the zoning ordinance went into effect in the 70s, as these had been here for a while. And there's a picture of the driveway and another shot of the house. So this is the Tipperary property, and the applicant wishes to downsize and therefore wants to move to the rear of the property. And they have about two acres total. This is the second house on Cherokee Drive. And they have about two acres total, so they're going to take these two lots and create three lots out of them. And this picture here is the side yard of the Cherokee Drive home, and this shows the space where they're creating the road frontage for the new lot. So it will, it's 50 feet wide and goes through this area, and we have worked with the surveyor to adjust the setbacks so that they work. And also, the applicant appeared at Boza in, I believe it was in August, and Boza approved some minor variances for the setbacks. This picture is where the pool used to be. I think the pool's been gone now almost 20 years. So, and that's the pool house that went with the pool at that time. So that is, explains one of the other structures there on the plat. So I'll go back to the plat, and you can see the only last, last remaining item in August, this Cherokee lot, when they split off the 50 feet to give this lot road frontage, the Cherokee lot was just shy of an acre. It was like .31, and needed to be .34 to meet the zoning, R1 zoning. So this boundary, the rear boundary line was modified a little bit, and now it meets the size requirement. So pretty much covers everything. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Thanks.
All technical items taken care of, Mr. Logan?
Yes, they are. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I think we've answered all the questions. We've been through it the last several months. I'll make a motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept or submitted. Do we have a second?
I'll second then.
We have two seconds. We have Ms. Yvonne was first. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Number two, old business. Site plan, Scott Equipment, requested by Jay Fulmer. Property located on Waldron Road, Tax Map 15, Parcel 17.0203, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by the Scott Corporation, LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This applicant is located on Waldron Road beside the Walgreens. They first appeared here at the Planning Commission in May, and at that time, they just were seeking feedback about the placement of the building on the lot. And you'll remember that the way the lot is shaped, they are wanting to build a service department in addition to the sales and office space. So the service department was, is facing Waldron Road, and they were concerned at that time it didn't meet exactly the ordinance for the overlay district requirements. But there is some elevation gain here on Waldron Road because the railroad, the railroad tracks are here to the northwest. So there's some elevation gain, so it's, as the motorist is driving, they don't necessarily see much of that in the back. The rest of the building, or the, I guess you'd say the more formal part of the building faces the Walgreens, which is north, and parking is here also in that area. And they have complied with the zoning ordinance in terms of number of car parks. They're actually a little bit over what's required. And the driveway configuration...
That's not the current one.
Okay. So this driveway was back in the summer a 90, and now it's, then they changed it again. So...
Mr. Chairman, board, and your packet, there is the updated drawings. This is just from their last submission. They have consolidated the driveway per my recommendations and the request of the board as discussed. They can, they have ample site distance based on their traffic or, excuse me, access study that was performed. So you can look in your packet or take my word, but they have fixed things as we discussed.
Very good.
That is not a curve point.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record since you're standing there, sir.
Jay Fulmer, 2002 Richard Jones Road, Nashville, Tennessee.
There. Thank you, sir. Questions or comments from the board? I'm sure we've got a couple.
Number two, under the technical items?
Yes, sir. Size of vertical pole sign exceeds the size allowed in the city sign ordinance. Mr. Logan?
Yes, so Mr. Fulmer and I have had some conversations over the last month about the signs. And if you remember, last month, they submitted this diagram and the math, which is 116 inches by 250. You can see, I added this slide in from last month. That was coming up to 201 square feet. So, you know, currently, the Laverne sign ordinance doesn't allow a pole sign that large. 125 is the max. So that was a discussion last month, and then Mr. Fulmer and I have talked tonight. And the, this was submitted last month as a prototype, and this sign, I believe, is on Bridgestone. Is that right?
Yeah, that was intended just to give you a replica. That was not intended to be the size being requested. And we had resubmitted the sign showing those lettering. Unfortunately, I don't know if they made it into your packet or not, but we can get those emailed to you. But the intent is to have the sign less than 125 square foot of elbow and to fully comply with code.
You did submit them, sir?
We did. I had submitted it by email to Bo, and then we had, a couple days later, gotten him to print a copies, but somewhere in the shuffle, I know they didn't make it into your packet.
Okay.
And so I don't know if you, do you have the ability to pull up the one I emailed you from your computer?
I don't, unless Jerry knows how to do that. But I would say, I'm pretty sure the sign approval is part, is not part of the Planning Commission approval, but, you know, it's up to you all.
If it's in our packet, then we would have to send it to Board of Zoning Appeals for the sign approval, correct, Mr. Coats? We'd have to send them to Boza and then come back to the planning, unless we have...
Yeah, I mean, that'd be, to me, it'd be like a procedural question. I know on Taco John's, that was before I worked here, but I think Taco John's was approved, and then they came back with their signs. That's how it's done sometimes. So I, it's really not my decision, but...
You can do it both ways, as I mentioned. Obviously, Boza may say no on the signage, and the signage must have to be then changed to Boza's requirements.
But Mr. Fulmer, you're saying that you submitted one that's below the 125 of the ordinance?
Yes, yes. So the, if you look, it's kind of cut off on the right side. What we did is, eight inches is about the band that's around the outside of it. And so the dash line on the inside's 114 square feet. And so if you have to consider the full outside to outside, then it's slightly above, and we'll be happy to shrink it down. But it's similar to a monument sign. You don't count the columns on the side. It's more the changeable copy sign or the face of the sign. And so that's the only part that's up for consideration that could be seen either way. And if we need to shrink it down, then we will. We were looking to match the same width of the sign that they had made at each of their other sites.
Okay. I'm going to get some advice from our resident sign expert, Mr. Coats.
Well, I mean, from, if you shrink it down to meet the requirements, obviously it meets the requirements and off you go.
Right.
Looking at what you've got there, historically, the board, you know, looks at what's on the street. The more preferred, I think, if you've got it down to meeting the requirements.
Sure.
And if you don't, then we can continue on with your plat moving forward, and then you have to come to Boza for the approval for the sign if it's outside our requirements.
We can shrink the 116 to 180 to get that below 125 square feet if that is, that's the clearest black and white interpretation of satisfying it, if that's what makes everybody feel good about it.
Mr. Chairman, just as a point of clarification, the way I understand it, and Randolph could chime in here too, the way I understand signage is generally, that's going to be a permit issue through codes. Now, if they, if the signage that's proposed doesn't meet the requirements as determined by the codes enforcement officer, Mr. Randolph, then an appeal could be taken to the Board of Zoning Appeals to seek a variance. So generally, that's not, I think Bo was bringing this up, it's not a site plan issue. Now, it's good that he's confirming that they're underneath the requirements, but your approval wouldn't dictate whether it's approved or not. It'd have to be separately permitted once that they start installing it by Randolph, who would determine whether it meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance or not. That make sense?
Very good clarification. Thank you very much. That helps us out quite a bit. So staff is okay with where the sign is? Okay. There you go. All on the same page there. With that, any other questions for the applicant?
Let's move on to the traffic study that's supplied.
And I've also got Amy Birch here, who prepared it.
First of all, it's for us a little unusual when you're signing, when you're sending us a document without it being signed. We like to see, if your engineering's going to sign it, to be signed, that's number one. Number two, just knowing the street and the way it is and dealing with it every day. Not saying it's inaccurate, but I have some concerns with it. With that being said, Bo, do you mind flipping back to the old site plan they showed us?
That way. So, and we're going back to the driveways, and we appreciate you going from two to one was what we're looking for. But your initial driveway there on the, on the left side of that drawing shows the entrance way, and you were quite happy to have it at that location with that layout. Now you've gone to one, one entrance, you've moved it obviously to the right, and now in your report saying it's a, it's a right place for it. I would contend that the junction where you have it presently on that, the one to the left, is a correct place for it, and I'd be more happier if that roadway was made for what you've got on here with ours versus the way you've got it positioned on the one you presented to us.
Mr. Chairman, board? Generally, I took issue with the placement of the left driveway because as you're going up the hill, your site distance is limited, which makes that turning movement more difficult, which is why they're really, their best option, in my opinion, which engineers are, like everyone else, we have opinions, was, you know, to take it further to the north side toward Walgreens, which is what basically resulted in the consolidated driveway. In my, once again, this is my opinion, engineers are opinionated. The, putting it in the middle is kind of splitting the baby, so to speak. It gets us the site distance with the hill, and it takes us a little bit further away from the intersection of Waldron and Murphysboro. So a little less potential for conflict there. Like I said, my, my personal issue is with the driveway on the left of the drawing as you're looking at it on the screen.
More of a staff recommendation. Any, any other questions or comments or questions for us?
So it looks, that's still going to be an ingress and egress in the center, the compromise center lane, right?
So what's the intent of the property? Now you've got the road in the middle to the right side of it, that you, mind the display area. So is that the intent of putting the big vehicles there for display, the new vehicles?
The intent is display. If there was any other thing considered in the future, we would, of course, come back and make an application. But, you know, the intent's for display.
And the road, the way it's presented, presented as here and not what's up there, you can work with that?
Yes. We would prefer that. That, as far as getting on-site and the flow to get the trucks around, it's much better than the location shown on the old plan, just because the, in this plan, the trucks will get on, they'd have to jog or make the hard left turn, and this manner, they can just keep going and loop the site and separate themselves from the vehicle or traffic.
Then just going back to the one that was shown there, on the existing road to the right, is that a dumpster pad on that right angle or what's the little block?
That was for drainage.
Very exact.
It was, that was a low point where the curb stopped, and so it would filter the water and prevent, prevent erosion. That's no longer a part of the current plan.
So that the road that you present there with the one entrance, it doesn't affect any drainage? I mean, it's...
It's better for the drainage because it's less pavement. It'll also be tilted towards the outside, so the water will roll off and roll across the lawn, and then ultimately into the floodplain, which helps treat it.
So it's just going to head towards the back of the property and where the other flood area is?
Yes, yes, sir.
Just a comment, I mean, we've talked about this, but the potential flooding in the back of the property, you don't see any issues with putting your building there and getting water into it?
We're, no, we're well above it, and we, so we're actually going to have to build up the site, not significantly, but a little bit, get all the drainage to the detention pond that's in between the floodplain and our property or our building site. So we've got, you can see the dash line up there, that's the same location of our detention pond, and it'll then discharge into the, into the river.
Creek.
Creek. Slide, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? With that, I will entertain a motion on this item.
Sir, I would...
Yes, sir.
I didn't quite finish all of my presentation, but we don't have to hit all of it, but one high point is the window that had been proposed to be a large S in the past has now been removed. And so these were submitted, and they're also in your packets tonight, that show what they're proposing the front to look like.
I like the look of that without the, without the S. It blends nice.
So effectively, all their signage now meets our requirements, therefore there's not a...
Yes, sir. That's right.
Right. With that, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept or submit it?
We have a motion to accept or submit it. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Next item. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, amend Section 4.030 and Section 8.040 of the zoning ordinance regarding temporary use regulations for fireworks tents. Mr. Logan?
Thank you. So this is an amendment to the Laverne zoning ordinance with regard to fireworks sales. And currently, there's been some confusion because there's a section in the zoning ordinance that lists the dates that fireworks can be sold, and there's a section in the municipal code that lists dates that the fireworks can be sold. And they haven't exactly matched. So in your packets is this handout with the ordinance that has all the language, and this ordinance would eventually go to BOMA if approved by this body. And the, the current language for fireworks in the zoning ordinance says they may be sold between June 21st and July 5th, and also between December 19th and January 2nd. So those dates will come out of the zoning ordinance, and instead, now it will say fireworks may be sold between the dates found in the Laverne Municipal Code Title 7, Chapter 6, Section 7-608. And the second change is currently, there's a $250 fee for fireworks tents, and that would move to 500. And you might remember, two weeks ago, I mentioned, I think Smyrna is now at 500, and I think Murphysboro is 600. And that's, that's two communities near us, but most everyone is, is way above 250. And that, that kind of recaps the changes. So I'll be glad to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much, sir. Are there any questions or comments from the board in regards to this amendment? With that, I will entertain a motion to send a favorable or unfavorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
So moved.
Sir?
Make a motion to make a favorable recommendation to the Mayor and Alderman. Favorable recommendation to the Mayor and Alderman.
Thank, thank you, sir.
Easy for you to say.
Yeah.
I'll second whatever he says.
So we will be sending a, we, we have a motion to send a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman by Mr. Coats, correct?
Correct.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We will be sending a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman in regards to this item. Thank you, Mr. Coats. Next item. Preliminary plat, Carruthers Crossing, Section 1, requested by SEC Inc., property located on Carruthers Road, PO Tax Map 29, Parcel 29, PDR Plan Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Woodridge Investments, LLC. Mr. Logan?
Thank you. This is Carruthers Crossing, located on Carruthers Road, and this project received initial approval back in 2006, and at that time, it was zoned to Plan Density Residential, and was part of a larger plan development that was in Davidson County and Rutherford County. So this is, all the property does touch Davidson County, and they did get approved at that time for 368 dwelling units total, and the preliminary plat being presented is 358 units. So there's, there's just a slight difference there. Of course, they're not required to build 368, so there's no issue with the 358. Everything that is proposed is single-family. There's no multifamily proposed. And last month, we talked a little bit about the lot sizes, and most of the lots are in the front or closest to Carruthers, most of those lots are 32 feet wide, some are 35 feet wide. And then as you go south and away from Carruthers, the lots do get larger. And these were the pictures from about two and a half weeks ago, and you can see the construction there that's newly completed on Carruthers. And this is all, this stretch of Carruthers is all at the entrance of the proposed subdivision that's before you tonight. And then this is looking back from one of the side streets, looking back to the, toward Davidson County. And there's, it's been tough because they, they have a very sort of narrow road frontage, and it's, there's a lot of factors going on with the creek and, and the road, and so they've, they seem to have done a good job addressing all those issues and getting a plan that will, will benefit Laverne and be good for future residents and current residents. So getting into the more specifics, you remember last month, close to the road, when this PR was originally approved, there were commercial pockets scattered. There was not a table that required a certain percentage of commercial, but it was sort of scattered in that design booklet. And in working with SEC the last several months, they've come up with this plan in the front to have kind of a live, work, play area, and most likely would be commercial downstairs and possibly residential upstairs. And there's a closer look. Then there's a parking area up here in the back that has 78 spaces. And there are several alley-loaded houses, and that's what you see here on the plan is the alley. And so moving on a way, you kind of start to see some of the larger lots here, and then here to the south and west, and see more of that. It is a large development, so apologize for the separate pages, but I think from last month, I know there was some discussion about the front part and exactly the part next to Carruthers, exactly how that would flow and how the parking and the patrons to any of those businesses, when they come in, how they would all interact with the residents and traffic flow. So the packets contain some more elevations of what the commercial area may look like, elevations from Carruthers Road, and there's also several color elevations in your packets that show the typical housing product for the development. And that's kind of a general overview, so staff will be glad to answer any questions that you may have about the project.
Thank you very much. You have anything, Mr. Leach?
As stated before, of course, this is just a preliminary plat, so we'll, you know, get into the nitty-gritty details when we actually get construction plans and that type of things when they come for final plat. So obviously, they've, they're pretty far along in their general layout, but as always, things tend to change from preliminary to final, so just make sure to keep that in mind.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just a couple of questions. First one's for staff. On the workshop, we had Lot 16 is calculated flood area. Did that get organized? So Lot 16 is a calculated flood area, need to be noted on the final plat?
So, your comment? Questions about Lot 16?
Yes.
I don't have that comment.
I mean, that's... Oh, that was a, that was a copy and paste error. It was a remnant from a different plat.
And then a couple for the applicant, if you stand up, please.
Someone here this evening for this application? Name and address for the record, sir.
Rob Mulch, SEC, 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Murphysboro, Tennessee. Yes, sir.
So I see you've changed the alley there to Lot 11. Is that going to flow for you? Is that going to work for you?
Correct. As per your guys' discussion at the workshop, we went back, removed the alley connection to the parking lot for the commercial area, and that turned it so it became a true intersection with Road C on that side. So there is no connectivity from the standpoint of people trying to cut through the parking lots to get to the, to the alleyways behind the homes in that, in that little section on that side there. So we did take and make that modification on that side, which I think was a good, good question and a good answer.
I understand this is preliminary, but we did discuss about what phase that you would add a traffic light to Carruthers there. Have you thought about when that's coming about? Because obviously, we need to, this is preliminary, but as we move forward, we'll make sure that we, the city and you, the developer, know that we agree at a certain phase when you can put the traffic lights system in.
If we stay in the status quo, saying we're looking at 50 lots per section, I think about 150 to 200 lots, so we're offering that three to... I think about 150 to 200 lots, so we're often in that three to Section 3 or Section 4 phase would probably be a good number at that point in time in regards to committing to a light at that intersection on that side. I think Mr. Adam would kind of concur with that in regards to that being a good number. That 150 to 250 homes is a good number to go in regards for a traffic light at that intersection.
Is that a note that we can add to the final? Is that a note we can add to final, Mr. Leach?
When we do the final, we can, of course, enter into what would be called a phasing agreement in other cities. Essentially, we can either have that addendum as part of the final plat or just a note in the construction plans. It can be done either way. Addendum, of course, is fine with me.
Very good.
And then going on, so the road A, we have City Road, and at the back of the properties, the driveway, the alleys, but they'd be classed as private, correct?
That has been my understanding. We were hoping to be them to be public alleyways, but in discussions with staff, that it sounds like the city would not want to undertake the maintenance and/or policing of the alleyways, that they would prefer them to be private. But we would hope that they would have been public alleyways on that side. But I don't know if this board has a choice of discussions in regards to... ... situation, but we had hoped in bringing this project forward, they'd be public alleyways. But, you know, that's... In regards to discussions with staff and understanding their points, I mean, we'd still like for them to be public alleyways, but, you know, at the same token, we understand what, you know, what the reasons of why staff is pushing for them to be private.
So that being said, and if we move ahead with private, I think we'd like to get, as we move forward with this process of how it's going to be handling the HOA and what's going to happen, because I'm sure there's going to be lots of discussions where as you sell these, you'll be calling the city and say, hey, back of our alley, it's this, this, this. And they're going to have to say, well, it's private, and you've got to deal with the HOA. So I think to get ahead of the game before final of getting that organized in the HOA agreement would be a good idea.
Okay.
Just a comment.
And I have a question for the City Attorney. With the main streets being city streets, and we have a city ordinance for no parking on the streets, what is your opinion on that?
Yeah, so since in my time doing this, there've been, what I understand to be, at least one other, I think, development that involved parking, that it was on-street parking, but it was cavernous, or it was creviced outward to where it didn't actually obstruct the cars going either way. So I'm not sure. I'd have to look back at the actual ordinance to see if it even ordered to address this. But I think that technically, it needs to be on the plat, on the final plat. Maybe that's something that Adam and I can work on to where that actual creviced-out part is not actually part of the dedicated public road aspect. I don't know if that's a way to go about it, or if there needs to be some other mechanism looked into. If that's something that this board wants me to look into, I can with staff before any sort of final plat is approved.
Please, so we don't have any conflict at that level.
If I may, I've got a couple exhibits I want to pass out. One of those, I think, will help kind of show you the... I understand the dynamics of this on-street parking versus the travel lanes on that side.
We're trying to cover all bases, all the way around. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Kind of skip Exhibit A. We can talk about that in a moment, but we'll kind of move towards looking at Exhibit C on the back page there. The... Kind of wanted to give you guys a little color rendering to kind of give you an understanding about these on-street parking situations as part of the PDR, and how we're planning on addressing them to keep them as a separate, you know, separate feel or character to the actual traffic flow as we present on this side. So as per staff, we designed all the roadways themselves to be two 12-foot travel lanes with an eight-foot parking lane off to the side. So the best way to help make those feel segregated is to do these, what we call intersection bulbs, as you can see there, which more or less narrows down the intersection so you have a much shorter pedestrian connection across the street, but also helps define a better edge in regards to where your on-street parking starts and ends on that side. So it helps define that on that side. So I think this is, you know, this is used, you know, a lot of other places in regards to on-street parking, whether it be in an urban environment or even a residential environment, just to help, you know, one, to create a more pedestrian-friendly environment, but also, two, to help delineate more or less how the, you know, the parking vehicles will be stacked, and then also allowing to make certain that you maintain a full travel lane along the main streets themselves on that side. So just wanted to give you an idea of that a little bit on that side.
It does clarify, we're just trying not to have conflict with our city ordinance or anything. We'll get it all worked out.
So the green area that you're showing there, that would be grass?
Yeah, there'd be a tree lawn area there with the sidewalk. And then behind the sidewalk, you'll have 10 feet of front yard before you get to the actual structure itself. So you'll have green. You're going to have... Totally have green on the other side of the sidewalk, too, but just, you know, between the curb and the sidewalk will be a tree lawn area.
Very good.
I'm not sure if this is going to be taken care of when you develop your HOA, but there will be something in there to deter RVs, boats, and all that stuff from trying to park.
I think in most typical HOAs, that is, especially in this situation in regards to the alleyways, you know, there's definitely not a lot of room behind the alleyways anyways in the first place. Because these, again, these are 32-foot lots typically in width, so you're only having enough room in there. Plus, you're talking 22 to 20-foot of space behind the garage to the alleyway for a parking space. So they're not really conducive, first of all, spatially for a, you know, like a motor home or something like that. But I think, you know, with most HOAs, you usually have something written in that. That'd be one of those things I think our HOA would include as well.
Very good. So you're showing the walking trails. Is that... Are you intending putting those in?
That is our conceptual layout in regards to working in our walking trail system as our amenity package for the community on that side. Maybe as we go through the construction documents with each of the different phases, we'll incorporate that in these areas, incorporate those areas as part of our walking trail system to get, you know, to add an extra level of connectivity besides the sidewalks along the city streets and such on that side. So that'll also be integrated with our grading and drainage plan as we go through on that side. Because as you know, most of the site does fall down towards this edge, towards the creek over there. So we'll be integrating this as part of our overall package on that side.
Just when you say the walking trail, I understand this is preliminary or moving forward. Is that be a dustless surface, or what type of surface would it be?
We're looking at like a mulch-type surface on that side. So we'll be utilizing, you know, in part, as part of the construction, we'll probably be removing a lot of the tree masses out there. So we're looking at incorporating a chipper on site. So as we move through the progress, we'll chip down those trees. Instead of having to haul them off or burn them up, we can utilize that as our mulch base for our trail system.
Then just at the front of the property, dumpster pads? I mean, I know it's going to be an issue with commercial area. What's our plan for dumpster pads? Where you plan to put those?
Right now, we're looking at the location for that dumpster pad being the old alleyway entrance to the parking lot there. We felt that'd be a conducive spot for the dumpster pad in that back corner over there, away from the actual buildings themselves on that side. So we felt, you know, in solving one situation, we created ourselves a pad that would, in more an essence, allow us to, you know, create a dumpster pad location for the businesses on that side.
Very nice. And then my last question. The... Adding the bulbs, should we say, to the roadways? I mean, you're taking the sidewalk directly down all the way to the road, to the crossroad from one side of the street to the other, in these bulb areas?
Correct, yes. As you look at the diagram itself, you can see the sidewalks would come out in some kind of configuration. And there may be, you know, some modification to how they actually, you know, they actually interact at the intersection. But those bulbs allow for the pedestrian sidewalks, which are recessed behind the tree lawn area, to come out to the protection of that, you know, to the intersection itself, which narrows down the actual walking distance for a person to cross the street at those intersections. So it provides a much quicker means of pedestrian movement across the street, which then, you know, allows pedestrians to get more safely across the intersections at a point in time there.
Very nice.
And I think Exhibit B, Mr. Garvin, was an exhibit for you. I know you had some questions in regards to how the laneage would line up in regards to the intersection with the existing street across the street on that side. So I wanted to kind of give you a little graphic in regards to how the alignment of those laneage that we have coming out of the subdivision actually lines up with the street across the street so that as cars come out of that subdivision, if they cross the street to come into the commercial side over there or come across the street to visit a friend that lives in that neighborhood, those actually line up. So that's just a graphic to kind of help you understand how that interaction between the existing roadway on the other side and our proposed laneage on this side works.
Very nice. Thank you, sir. And it looks like you softened up the curve cut near the entrance that was protruding out. It looks like y'all backed it up a little bit for us.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? Pam?
If you could get a copy of those records, the exhibit papers.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I think we've worked well with what we've suggested. And so with that, I'll make a motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept or submit. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Most passes. Thank you. Thank you for working with us, sir. Next item, Final Plat Holland Ridge Villas, requested by Womble and Associates. Property located north of Sand Hill Road, Tax Map 14, Parcel 48.01, 51, and 51.01. R3 High Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Abnan Shreedman. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is the Holland Ridge Villas project. And as you just mentioned, it's located just north of Sand Hill. And the acreage is about seven-plus acres, and the property is zoned R3 and has been for many years. They are proposing a layout for multifamily development. And currently, it includes three parcels, which are highlighted there in blue on the map. And all the technical items have been addressed, so we'll be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for the applicant from the board or for staff?
Chairman, I think we addressed all the items that we had, and with that, I'll make a motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Sir?
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item.
Mr. Chairman, if I could have a...
Yes, sir.
... order.
Yes, sir.
Can we move eight?
Absolutely, sir. Thank you, sir. We will be moving on to item number eight. Site planned Holland Ridge Villas, requested by Womble and Associates. Property located on north side of Sand Hill Road, Tax Map 14, Parcel 48.01, 51, and 51.01. R3 High Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Abnan Shreedman. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. And of course, this is the same project and the same property. And this is for Holland Ridge Villas. And currently, it's about seven-plus acres, and they're proposing to build a townhome product here. So it's a multifamily development, and all of the technical items have been addressed. And we'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Just a comment for the staff. So the detention area pond slash sinkhole, we addressed that. Are you satisfied? Were we okay in that?
Mr. Chairman, Board, Graham, Mr. Womble's used this design in several other projects. I've witnessed it. It works very well. It's a... I'm going to say a dirty word, but it's a little over-engineered. There's plenty of extra capacity. It'll get the job done, at least in my opinion.
Thank you. Engineer saying over... I'll just move forward to make a motion to accept or submit.
We have a motion to accept or submit. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, we're going back to number six. Final plat re-subdivision of Lot 1B and Lot 2, 5605 Business Park, requested by LTT Land Surveying, property located on Murphysboro Road, Tax Map 18F, Group A, Parcels 1.01 and 1.02, C2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by Pavel Tolstov and Sterling Development LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Many of you know this property. It's on Murphysboro Road on the northeast side, past Walmart. And there's a few things slated for this property. And so the plat has a few different lots on it. And it's had this existing home on it for a long time. And this lot is slated to be a car lot, and I know that the site plan was approved. I looked it up the other day. I think it's been 21 months ago. So site plans expire in Laverne after 24 months, but I believe they are working now on that lot. So I'm not sure why it took so long, but it did take a long time. So that would be in this area where the house is, and then up the road. Well, here's another shot of the same area. So this is A-plus storage, which has been there a number of years. So that will be the neighbor now of this development. Then further to the right in this image is where Mini Storage Depot was approved, the site plan was approved by a planning commission just about two, it might have been three months ago. So what happened was Sterling Development, that's building Mini Storage Depot, has run into an issue where their driveway, the original plat from May, had a 60-foot-wide ingress egress on the property line. So it straddled the property line. So 30 feet went to Mr. Tolstov in this, what's going to be a car lot. The other 30 feet was on theirs. And then when Sterling went to T-DOT, they said, you know, you've got the 60 feet, and so you guys are going to have to work it out and use the same access. And then Sterling didn't know that, I guess back in the spring, they didn't know that T-DOT would have that opinion. So T-DOT wanted, I think it was 200-feet separation, give or take, and they didn't have that. So I tell you all this story because now they've come up with a solution, which is to just deed the rest of that 60 feet. So they're deeding 30 feet to this property owner where the car lot will go, so that that will all be on that lot. And then they meet the qualifications to get their own ingress egress.
Okay.
So it's a pretty... It looks simple on paper, but it's kind of a long story.
I think I got it. So basically, he's adding 30 feet to his plot from the other piece of property to correct the ingress and egress on the property.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
But he still needs to go back to T-DOT to get the approval for the driveway, though, correct?
I assume the way this is working is it's a chicken-and-the-egg situation. They need somebody to... T-DOT wants so much footage. They had a shared access platted originally. They need the shared access to go away so that they can give them a variance and get two driveways within a specific space. I think we're slightly easier to work with than T-DOT, so they came to us.
Baby steps. They'll get through it. Any other questions or comments?
Make a motion to accept or submit.
We have a motion to accept or submit. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Item seven has deferred.
Well...
So they're not here tonight.
With that being said, that was our final item. Mr. Leach, do you have bonds and letters of credits for us?
Sir, Mr. Chairman, Board, as a point of fact, one bond was paid out this month. The bondholder elected just to pay the city the bond amount. So we'll be releasing that bond once that check clears. That was for A-plus storage, and which most people will know it is the storage on the hill going down Murphysboro Road. The amount was $17,286.80. That amount has been given to Phyllis, our Director of Finance, and will be deposited in the city accounts. Additionally, there is one upcoming bond that will expire in November. I'll be following up with Southern Bank and Trust to get that one renewed. Everything else is pretty much as it was last month. We do have several bonds that will be expiring that are maintenance bonds from accepted subdivisions. So they'll be coming off our list. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Meeting adjourned.